Six o'clock. Call meeting to order and we do have a quorum present. Who's gonna lead up?
So Mayor, tonight, we have an I-35 corridor overlay presentation. And Mr. Tom Hester is here from Parsons Brinckerhoff. Y'all remember Tom from a few minutes, or actually probably a while ago, and what now we're working on 35. So becomes part of the team now. Tom, are you gonna run the power point?
Yes, Tom is gonna run the power point.
Okay, we're ready.
Ready? Okay, so I'm gonna, maybe we both could. I'm gonna just give you a brief intro to Council before you start.
Certainly.
So Mayor and Council, you're probably thinking, I-35 again? We thought we did that already, four years ago. So this is a continuation of what we are doing with I-35. As you remember, four years ago, or five years ago, we started on the plan, actually. Which set the framework for the I-35 redevelopment. Later on, we refined it more in the 2025 plan in terms of our gateways and what we want to have alongside the freeway. And then as part of implementation of the plan, after the Council adopted the plan formally, was to create an ordinance that would, in effect, deal with projects that are going to be new on I-35 or redevelopment. So what you're going to see tonight, as Tom Hester is going through, going through the program and the process, is the set of new guidelines that we're going to push the development framework for I-35 plan a little higher than what we've been getting on I-35. Keeping in mind that we are not changing anybody's zoning. So the zoning remains in place. So everyone will retain the zoning that they have currently on their properties. What changes is actually the development regulations for the project. These development regulations would apply when either someone wants to come in and do a brand-new development or substantial reconstruction or redevelopment. So it will not apply when you're just adding a very small addition to your property or if you are just doing some cleanup of the property.
Or if you have no change.
Or if you have no change, you're just doing, basically.
Same use, you're fine.
Same use, you're fine, exactly. So one of the things that we do need to tackle, however, is how do we encourage that change? Because that's one of the processes that we need to do so that we actually incentivize and encourage people to change and go to the new regulations on the ordinance. And we really don't want to force people to do that, but at the same time, you do want to have that higher use to start developing on I-35. And we believe that the market forces will take care of that. But at the same time, if there's anything that we can do to encourage that, we want to be able to do that. So certain regulations will, may apply. We are going to develop a matrix that if you do A, then only this much of the regulations will apply. But if you do A plus B, then more regulations will apply. And so that's going to help developments make a decision on when they want to renew their projects or if they're ready to sell their project and start brand-new. Now, we are going to, Tom is going to give you a brief overview of where we are. We've been working on this for about six months. If there are any questions, or, so we're going to basically hit the highlights because we don't want to inundate you with a lot of details. However, between now after Tom's presentation and your retreat, we are going to refine this ordinance in an ordinance format. Basically, it's going to be an ordinance that could be ready for adoption. And we're going to go through it and get in a lot of details, though, at the time at your retreat because we want to make sure that everybody's on the same page about changes. And some of these changes are significant. We are changing some processes as well as development regulations. So for that reason, we want to make sure that Council is on board with our changes. So with that, unless there's any questions before Tom starts, we're going to give it to Tom Hester with PB. Just to refresh her, Tom and his team developed the I-35 redevelopment plan for us as well as the I-35 identity plan, which is the identity you're seeing on the bridges and the sides of the road now on I-35. And then, of course, Tom was also involved in our 2025 plan as a...
Anybody have any questions before we start? Okay?
Good.
Go ahead.
I'm just gonna move on where you were going. The intent of the ordinance is to cover a few of the main pieces, as Nika was saying, some of the administration, overview of the ordinance, some of the key definitions, so all the terms are clearly defined, and then a series of exhibits. I'll go through those in more detail, and then the different standards for each of those districts. The administration, building on what Nika was saying, the intent is that it can be approved and monitored and administered from the staff as much as possible, working with different applicants based on different criteria that comes in. So if there are easy things to resolve through that matrix that Nika was mentioning, we want to be able to have the staff address that. Only when there's conditions that are gonna require an extreme alternative or variance would it need to be elevated up to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And there, we would have intent statements written in each of the different components so that it's very clear what the intent of that particular component is. And only if, at that point, they would be providing a recommendation to you all for approval of any of those amendments or variations. So the overall intent, intent of the ordinance, the overview, is to, as Nika was saying, more or less turn the plan, the I-35 plan, into an ordinance, providing development regulations for applicants to guide the development of that plan. The regulations are focused on mixed-use and commercial development. So the district maps that you're gonna see in a moment are focused only towards those commercial and mixed-use areas. So we aren't trying to apply this to strictly residential areas. And if there are any conflicting provisions between existing ordinances or the development regulations that can be recommended, the idea is that the ones that are more scrutinizing, more restrictive, would be applying. We have a series of essential elements. Definitions are going to be very clearly defined. This is the main boundary map, which defines all of the mixed-use and commercial areas. Again, we're trying to be very strategic not to identify residential properties. We're also defining two main districts, what we're calling gateway districts as well as what we're calling corridor district. The corridor district will, in many ways, refer to some of the base zoning regulations and in many cases, enhance those slightly. It's in the core areas or the gateway areas that we intend to have more of an enhancement from what is required in the base districts.
Which matches up the 2025 focal identity points.
Exactly. The intent is that we're gonna have detailed framework plans that identify the mobility framework as well as open space and landscape requirements for each of those four areas. Many of them have already been defined in existing documents. This is two examples.
Can I add something, Tom?
Certainly.
So as Donna mentioned, we had three focal points as we did the 2025 plan. The northern focal point, the middle section, which is I-35 and 121, and then the southern focal point where the mall is and all the new development. The middle section, which, another portion of it, which is basically the hospital area, so at Main Street, we had not identified that on any of our plans. But at this point, when we were looking at the corridor, we felt like that's a focal point as well, where Main Street is and where the hospital is. And if any redevelopment happens in that area, we wanted to target that as a focal point as well. So this ordinance will identify that as a focal point.
Now, because now, you've got the Old Town Overlay District that's picking up that hospital district. And we have had some issues that really, while they fit Old Town, didn't necessarily fit what we needed for the hospital. And so this really cleans up some of those conflicts that we had.
That's great. It also ties into the hospital's master plan. That's something that we are working with the hospital. As part of the last development agreement that the Council approved for the hospital, the hospital is required to do a new master plan for the future, for the next 10 years of development. So this piece will also fit into the hospital's master plan.
So I wanna go over one of these districts, and I'm gonna just use the example of one of the gateway districts and talk about some of the more, more of the criteria that would be involved in there. We're gonna be addressing the idea about building placement and talking about what the setbacks are and how the building would be placed on the site. Again, in the gateway districts, we're looking for something that's gonna be a tighter urban form. We're looking for building orientation that's gonna be, with an intent that's gonna be more based towards primary streets. And these will be identified in the framework plans, the graphic framework plans, in trying to create the more of a pedestrian and walkable area. So we'll have detailed graphics, kind of a soft, form-based code, like, we wanted to make it easy for the development community to respond to these regulations. But we're gonna be creating what we're calling a build-to-zone. So we've got some minimum and maximum criteria in terms of setbacks for front, rear, and side yards as well as how we could deal with alleys for budding properties. Also gonna be addressing driveways, looking at minimum widths, or sorry, maximum widths of driveways and minimal spacing. In the gateway areas where we're trying to get more of a walkable area, we're trying to reduce the continuous curb cut and trying to create a safer area and a more pleasant atmosphere and environment for walkability. Same one with the onsite circulation, trying to create more of that connectivity and mobility within those gateway areas.
Again, Tom, I'm sorry. So we have an access management policy all along I-35, which has been approved by TechDOT. So the access management policy is applicable in the areas that are not the nodes. So in the nodes, you want a little tighter policy, less driveways, more controlled access, more connections to driveways, slower traffic as they come in, they exit the highway and come into the side streets or coming inside the development. And then that's where you try to create your walkable areas.
Yeah, building on that, on the framework plans, we're not trying to focus a lot of the primary entrances right on the interstate itself or on the frontage roads. We're actually looking at wrapping the pedestrian quality around the sides so that cars would be on the major arterials, then flowing on to collector roads and then on to private roads that would get access into the developments. And that's where we can get the slower speeds because we aren't gonna try to compete with some of the TechDOT access requirements. And of course, that's not necessarily a walkable, the most walkable environment. We can have more control on the other collector streets and private streets that would wrap around the development.
I think the mall area is a really good example of something that really doesn't have any pedestrian circulation, if you think about it. We were just looking at that this afternoon, and you see the restaurants along the ring and then through the mall. And other than driving or a pretty long walk, there's really no pedestrian circulation encouraged.
Yeah, there's just continuous sidewalks in that area.
Yeah.
And it's hard to walk around unless you're walking through the parking area. For parking, we're looking at a couple of different innovative ways to address parking. Some ideas we're looking at is can we have just a common parking requirement within the gateway areas as opposed to some of the corridor areas? We're gonna be looking at how to treat the parking and where the parking would be located. The idea that integrates with some of the building orientation and building placement is to try to move some of the parking towards the back of the building away, oriented with the primary entrance, but not have it to where it's gonna be on the primary street facade so that when you're driving by, you're not gonna necessarily see an entire sea of parking and then the building. We're trying to make that a little bit more equal, but also integrate onsite pedestrian access. In terms of parking structures, we see that they're gonna be more viable in those more nodal and gateway areas. There are some ideas about maybe considering a parking district so that if a parking structure is desired but can't be provided from the private sector alone, maybe there could be a contribution into a district that could help pay for this. In the corridor district and the more relaxed area, maybe there's opportunities for more shared parking and having some of those parking numbers contribute to a shared facility. The second part of this deals more with the architectural standards, addressing building articulation, building facade, colors and materials, roofs, canopies, and windows. In a similar way, we're looking for a breakdown of building articulation within the gateway areas in the more horizontal and vertical way to where we can actually give some guidance for material selection, material use, as well as breaking up the facade. And that will roll from the building articulation itself into the facade materials itself as well as windows and fenestration and spacing of those. In terms of landscape materials, we're looking at trees and plant materials as well as hardscapes, as well as open spaces. So on the trees and site furnishings, we're looking at decreasing some of the spacing requirements that are currently required in some of the base zoning, trying to improve the landscape requirements, so by reducing some of the spacing. For instance, in some of the gateway areas, we're looking at, doesn't make sense to have, you know, 50 to 30-foot spacings for some trees, utilizing the existing tree and plant materials that is already approved through the city. In terms of also secondary landscape materials, in terms of shrubs and so forth, trying to increase the use of those. In terms of the open, well, I also have a summary where I can deal with some of the open space. We also have streetscape standards that we're looking at that would be addressing private sidewalks, trails, lighting, street furniture, and public housing. We're also looking at screening of undesirable views, having more stringent requirements on those that are in the nodal areas, the gateway areas, versus those that are in the corridor areas. So we'll have a set of standards for the gateway areas and then a second set of standards for the corridor areas.
Could you back up a couple of slides?
Certainly.
Right there, the screening. What comes to mind is, right now, we're having issues with charitable organizations and their requirements for screening their, or for not screening their containers or this sort of thing. So have you given any consideration to what might happen, I guess, in the subject of screening? As it, as it, as those organizations might come forward later and have an issue with our screening that we're outlining here?
We'd work with them. Legal would work with the consultant and Nika to make sure we address that if it comes to issue.
Okay.
So we have a similar matrix, but the regulations for building placement and building orientation will refer more towards the base zoning in the corridor areas and the more relaxed areas. But similar to the gateway areas, it's gonna have the same kind of criteria that will be addressed. What I want to do is go over that overview, but then talk, what your real question probably is, what are the main differences? So I put together a few summary slides and just gonna hit some of the highlights of some of the main differences. And Nika, feel free to pipe in. In terms of the building placement, we're obviously looking for something that's more compact versus in the corridor area where we intend to have just reduced setbacks that would refer more towards than what are required in the base zoning district. But we're trying to refer to the base zoning, and the corridor district is more like a base zoning plus. So we're trying to look at ways to enhance the base zoning without putting too much of an impetus on the developer to come up. On building orientation, the focus is along the primary streets. On the, the intent in the corridor areas to really create more of a cohesive area within there as best we can. On the building heights, we're talking about in the gateway areas to have more, maybe a taller one-story requirement, maybe 25 feet, so that you actually can create that built form in that pedestrian, walkable environment and create that sense of scale even with one-story buildings. Whereas in the corridor area, we may just defer to the base zoning for that. In the driveways, the idea about having those reduced driveway widths, which may be a separation of those, but then increasing the overall spacing. And in the corridor area, looking at maybe just increasing the overall driveway spacing, but leaving the width the same. Again, these are things, we're trying to, again, do the enhanced plus. So these are all ideas that we're playing with and working with staff on. The onsite circulation, one is about having more of a walkable area. The other is about making sure that we can connect some of the parking areas with the buildings themselves. The parking, you know, the idea of, does it make sense to have one common ratio within the gateway areas, about maybe 1 to 300 versus maybe 1 to 400 in the corridor areas? And also the idea about sharing some parking, having those parking districts within each. The building articulation, looking at, again, the horizontal and vertical breakup versus maybe just a vertical breakup on some of the larger boxes and those areas within the corridor zone. The building facade is more about treating the ground floors as well as the building entries, whereas the, in the corridor, will be referring to the base zoning. The materials, we'll be looking at providing some accent materials within the gateway areas and just increasing some of those requirements that are in the base zoning right now because we don't have a lot of requirements for a range of materials. The awnings and canopies, we're just trying to enhance that in both of the districts as well as in windows in terms of providing transparency along some of the accessways, looking like these places are more active within there and providing more activity. For the landscaping, it's about providing more landscaping within the gateway areas and just doing an enhanced plus on the corridor by reducing some of the spacing that's required thereby increasing the materials. Hardscaping would be more complementary with each of the different districts. In open space, what we're thinking about is providing possibly 10% open space within the gateway areas, and that can be used for internal courtyards or multiple kinds of private open space or public-private open space. Whereas in the corridor districts, we're looking at increasing that to, from no requirements to about 5%, which could be used for enhanced parking lot landscaping, which could be more sustainable as well as providing a better aesthetic within those areas.
So all those green, will that landscape be, looking at reduced water plantings and those types of things even though we're looking to upgrade or increase the density of the greenscape?
We are, we're looking at a range of different intents. We want to make sure that it achieves all the guidelines from what the staff has been providing. But yes.
Yes, we would look at more sustainable type of things.
Right, so we wanted to, in many of these areas, we didn't want to reinvent the wheel. Or if we are working on a particular set of ordinances, we didn't want any complex. So one of the things we're working on with our green code and with the new landscaping ordinance is creating a new list of planting. And initially, we actually had one dedicated just for the I-35 corridor. But we decided to take it out and just go with the, because once we have one standard, and if that standard works for the city, let's just use it for the entire city, if it works in both districts. And we believe that it works. So that's the direction we're going throughout the city regardless of this ordinance. And we're gonna include that planting list as part of the list.
That's the manage if you've got one master. Thank you.
Plus, the intent is to have more meaningful open space. So what would go in towards the 10% and 5% wouldn't necessarily be what is left over. It's gonna be something that's more meaningful.
That's a really good point. Because right now, what you have, so we have right now, a pretty good landscaping requirements. It's just that there's a lot of, how do you call it, like, simulated leeway is given to the developer on how they use that ordinance or that regulation. So truly, the open space becomes whatever is left over, behind the building, drainage areas, instead of connection, for instance, from the parking lot to the building, that you could use some form of a plaza, some form, something to enhance the actual experience of getting from your car into that building. So this ordinance will actually allow us, when we review the site plan, to make some of those changes on the site plan to say, well, the 5% that you're required to do needs to be meaningful, needs to be in the front, needs to be in the connection from the parking lot to the building. This is just anywhere on the site.
So on that point, and I am mindful of the time, everything I've seen so far and including in the language is that we're looking at facades all facing forward, all facing out, rather than... And I'm starting to see this in other cities, and it's like, everything that's old is new. You go to Europe, you see them everywhere, is, and I hate to use this term because everybody recalls when you say mall, the open mall concept, the walkable space between parking that's behind all the retail and an area that may be covered, but it's not enclosed. It's not, it's not air-conditioned and heated, it's just covered for rain and snow. And throughout that covered space that is not facing the street, it's facing shop to shop, but connecting parking to other shops that are on the front, we have all manner of shops through that area. And then likewise, outdoor, semi-outdoor seating and landscaping that does well undercover and so forth. And I'm not seeing anything that promotes that style of design in this plan. It all seems to be lined up to face one way. And we're trying to figure out how to solve the problem of getting from back parking to front by creating some kind of channel, but not addressing it in that fashion. Am I missing something?
Everything you're saying is gonna be in here. For instance, we're talking about pedestrian paseos. We're looking at maximum building lengths so that a building, especially within the gateway areas, can only be so long without having a pedestrian break so that you can get that meaningful connection between parking on each side. And when we're talking about parking, we are trying to distribute the parking, not so it's all gonna be on one side of the building. We are trying to get buildings faced more towards a primary street, more towards where it's gonna be a primary walkable street so it's a better pedestrian environment. At the same time, we're trying to balance the needs of what the users are going to need, what the developers are gonna need, the tenants are gonna need, all of that.
Right now, everything faces I-35, right?
Yes.
That's going away. Really, you're trying to create that walkable space, so you have internal streets and you have buildings that are facing those internal streets. When he says street, he's not talking about I-35.
Okay, but when he says street, I still picture something traveled by cars. And I'm talking about something that's strictly pedestrian, but we have shops facing shops across open areas that, like I said, may have a roof covering for some degree of weather protection, but otherwise, it's not, it's not enclosed. I mean, it's, and again, I can name, go around the world, you find them everywhere.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm just thinking that's certainly allowable and something that we would actually encourage.
Encourage, exactly. So let's go to one of the framework plans, the beginning, one of the framework plans.
Because the visuals aren't showing that.
Yeah.
There, there we go. So basically, this is, this is what we're trying to encourage, especially at the nodes. So the only, the only thing we're trying not to do, which is happening a lot, and I'm sure you've noticed it here, is buildings tend to, at times, side or their back is to the, to the traveling public, pretty much, with a very blank facade. So what we're trying to encourage, if you have, if you're backing to our major arterials, even if you're backing to it, it look, it needs to look like the front of it. So basically, you have the same look that you have on the front, on the back, or on the side. So you're just not having these blank walls as you're traveling down the street. Well, this is, this is one of the nodes, as you can see, and how the buildings are arranged where they, again, what you're talking about, Casper Ferguson, where the front edge with the street-lined trees, with the, with the areas that could be, we have a strip tree on the street section here that we can show.
Not in this.
Not on this presentation. The street section where you're defining the pedestrian and the sidewalk and the landscaping area, which is exactly what you're talking about. So it's more, more shops on the street side with engagements. So take this.
Zoom it, Nika.
This is the street, so this is, so we're not talking about I-35. And you're coming inside the development, then you have this configuration where you have the buildings that are fronting on open space, you're fronting on turnaround, so the buildings are basically, sorry. What you're talking about, shop to shop, shop to shop.
And building on that, you've got a series of types happening. You've got the type that's gonna happen along the frontage road of I-35. Then they're gonna have the type that's gonna happen around 121, it's another major facility, and it's gonna be heavily traveled, it's very wide, and it's not gonna be as pedestrian-oriented. But then you're gonna have the secondary interior streets, and that's where we're really trying to get more of that higher quality. This is where you're gonna also have slower speed limits and probably a tighter street section, which we are, we're putting multiple street sections within the ordinance.
I'm still not sure I'm really communicating the vision that I have in mind, but I'll just talk to you later.
I think you, so I think you are communicating the vision. I'm just don't know if we are communicating back here about what we're trying to achieve because I think we are trying to achieve what you're looking for.
I think we had a developer that came in, and they had a retail development that had just internal walkways that kind of looked like streets, which is what I hear you describing. We would certainly encourage that and support that.
And there's retail on the internal, like.
Yes.
The retail virtually wraps the building. The retail virtually wraps the building, maybe not on four sides, but on two or three, you know, and possibly four. And then, kind of, I kind of recall that something you said, the architecture on the front would match the back. I don't see the need for the architecture, for the facade on the front, the overall design, I can't, you know, if it's a three-story building, it's a three-story building. But I don't know that I see the need for the facade on the front, you know, to be target on the front and target on the back.
Well, if you are facing both streets, so, I mean, you're still, you're still having that public view from the, so, so if they're backing to I-35, then you, that's all you're seeing, the back of the building to I-35.
Right.
And, and that's what we're trying to avoid, or we're trying to enhance the back facade as, as well.
Well, in that part, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so, that, that, that's the intent. So, one of the really good examples that we, we would like to encourage right now at Legacy, Legacy Pan Center, Pan Square, at Legacy, and the hallway, so that main street that goes through that has the shops and the Angelica Theater and all the restaurants around it, so technically, that's a drive, that, you know, people drive through it, very slow drive, yet on the, you know, you still have a lot of pedestrians on the side and a lot of patios, people sitting outside, so that's the intent of creating that kind of district.
Are we looking to limit curb cuts when we're doing all this too?
Yes.
And I'm talking about existing curbs that are already, cuts are already there. We have a frontage road or something on the.
They're coming for redevelopment, if they are, if they are, that's what that matrix is for.
Which is tough, because a lot of it's already into small pieces.
Correct. So, so if they are, so if they, first of all, we are going to require some cross-section, if a, if a new use comes in, they need to allow for some cross-access easements on their side, so when the next side comes in, they could connect to it.
Right.
So at this point, we're not going to impact any existing driveway for no reason. But yes, if they're coming for redevelopment, if their, that side is going to be scraped and redeveloped again or new, then yes, this, this, this would apply, and then you would apply your access management.
If somebody has a third to a half an acre, they're pretty much limited on doing any of that, as far as having a frontage in front, because that takes most of the property.
Right.
Or can.
So, yeah, they can, whatever existing, first of all, can exist right now. The, the intent of this is pretty much encourage that property assemblage, so, so they, you could have larger properties to develop, and then the smaller pieces, if they develop, so, so in the future, once the property assembles, the small corner piece may not have its own driveway, it may have to access from another driveway to the access, to the access system.
And that's, that is what the intent is, is to try to get that, but of course, Councilman, if we, it would be very hard unless we were going to actually create that assemblage to actually get that level of detail in there, but we are trying to encourage it while allowing the free market to, to make the assemblages.
And I, I realize there's a limit.
Yeah. So, that's kind of the summary of the differences, what we're trying to get within, within those. So the next steps are to move forward with the, with the details, we've got a lot of the details identified, we're still working through some of the other ones, calibrated against the existing standards, bring it back to the, the February retreat, start the public engagement, get some feedback, and then incorporate that, and then get it to, to adoption.
So at the end of this, we will have a form-based code?
Yes, what we are, what we're trying to do is kind of softly ease our way into that, so basically, the nodes, that's how the nodes will be. The nodes will have a form-based code which pretty much addresses your basic requirement plus what we call the public round, which says, we're really concerned about the form of the building, where they're located, and how they're going to react to the street, where the public is, versus your typical development, which is just parking, building, infrastructure.
No, I'm, I'm excited by the opportunity, about the same topic, and I want to make sure it's a really cool, well-known argument, because the last thing I want to be doing is sitting in here picking brick. I've watched way too many council meetings devolve into that, and it's nonsense.
Right, which is one of our main items to work on, is further develop the administration part of the ordinance. So the way this ordinance is administered, hopefully, could be maybe a model for as we move in the future in adopting our codes. We want the approval bodies to have enough input into the ordinance development and creation, where the administration part of it could really be done through staff, where it's very clear what staff needs to do, and in areas then where staff cannot work something out with the developer or development committee that meets the intent of the ordinance, or it's really moving away from our big picture, those are the type of things that need to come to planning a zoning commission council for consideration, versus your staff, that you're talking about.
So I saw elegant, yeah.
So you see, Karen is here also tonight, and she's here because as we move towards retreat, some of the items that we planned for your agenda deal with, the rewrite of your development ordinance, your small area plans, and certainly, that meshes with some of the information you heard tonight. And so, we're looking at laying out the retreat, and the more I've looked at this information, I, I think we're going to have to spend considerable time, because I want to get you guys comfortable with everything that is included in this proposed ordinance, because these are extensive changes. And so, I may be coming back to you to ask for another day of retreat, even though I told you we might not need Saturday, we may need Saturday. So I will be coming back to talk with you about that, but all of this starts kind of meshing and coming together, all the various projects that we have underway, so just be prepared. Retreat may be a little longer than what we expected, but there's some critical decisions, I think, for the council related to these plans that we need to spend considerable amount of time with, making sure you're comfortable with the details. Today was a very much a very high level, and so I didn't want to throw a lot at you tonight in a very short timeframe, I want to spend some additional time, and also certainly, once we get some of those details right now, I want to go back to the development community and have that feedback also. So there's still a lot of work to be done here, and we certainly need quite a bit of council input.
Anybody have any other comments or questions before we move on?
Good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Move on to item B, discussion of regular agenda items and consent agenda items. Invocation, Councilman Ferguson pledged to flags, Mayor Proton Gilmore, proclamations, public hearing. Anybody have any questions on that?
This is another development related to the Camelot landfill that is separate. This is the, this is Republic, the company that runs the landfill for Farmer's Branch, and this relates to an additional development that they'll have with the office, an office complex, it'll be the central offices for Republic in the DFW area, as well as an area for parking trucks.
It's not, it's not officially related to the Camelot landfill. It's just the, it's just the company that happens to also run the Camelot landfill.
I'm not going to participate in the vote on that. Just so you got enough.
I can do that one.
Right.
You're not going to participate?
I'm not going to participate in that.
So you're going to change for the tablet?
Yeah, I've already talked to Neil.
You're going to take care of it, Neil? Okay, good. Okay. Consent agenda?
If I could go back to the visitors and citizen forum. So I did invite a couple of people tonight that represent an organization called RSEVA, and RSEVA is a nonprofit organization that actually, on Make a Difference Day, did some significant work in one of our neighborhoods, various homes in that neighborhood. Now, these employees will look familiar to you, because they're also two-city employees that just happened to be involved in RSEVA, but I want you to see the quality of the work they did and what they achieved. We will look at working with RSEVA over the next year to actually expand this program into other neighborhoods and have more city involvement. So I just want them to spend some time on some before-and-after pictures. I see Josh is here, Josh Roberts was very involved in the project, and where's Prit?
She just stepped up.
Oh, Prit Patel. Prit actually established this group, RSEVA, several years ago in Mesquite, where they did some similar work, and she's now moved it to Lewisville. So during the citizen forums, they will be sharing that information.
Okay. Back to the consent agenda? Any questions on any of it? Okay, better ask now, because we're going to be through here in just a minute. Okay, now we're down to G, item six, regular hearing.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Could we back up to item D, I guess it is?
That's the public hearing?
No, not D, I'm sorry, three.
Item three, I'm concerned about.
Yes. I just have a couple of questions, like if this thing stays still. In regards to the. In regard to the aesthetic improvements for Fox Avenue, it, it all looks very good, and the financing is all there, but my question is about the, the light, the lighting and the poles or whatever that are going to be on that, on that overpass. Has anyone seen or seen the lighting? The improved lighting that's going to be on the Fox Avenue?
You mean the style of the pole?
The style of the lighting, and it also refers to some kind of, some kind of polling.
This was, this was the style of the poles, it was actually in the plan that Nika mentioned earlier, that was approved by the council a couple of years ago.
A couple of years ago?
Yes. Nika, when did we approve the aesthetic plan?
The identity plan.
Yeah, the identity plan.
The identity plan, it was actually in 2010.
Yeah, that many years ago, my, my, how time flies.
But that's, that's the walkway with the lighting and the bollers that protect the pedestrian.
Yeah, all of those styles were actually included in the plan that came before council and was adopted.
In 2010?
Yes.
Well, is there any way that this council can, can see the lighting that's proposed and the additional polling that, that's going to be used on that, on that overpass?
Fox Avenue.
Fox Avenue.
Fox Avenue, absolutely, yeah, actually.
I'd like to see the lighting that's proposed.
What happens if we change it?
Well, we'd have to go back and talk with Tex Dot, I mean, I think ours is unique to Lewisville, we're paying extra for that, you know, lighting. If it was more expensive, we'd have to pay.
Be a change order.
Yeah, absolutely. Fox Avenue.
Well, basically, I'm not looking to change it, but I'd like to see the style, actually, the style of the lighting, you know, we're five years later, and as far as cost, I'm not looking to increase the cost.
Right.
I would just like to see the lighting that was approved in 2010, and these other poles, what are they used for?
What, like?
On the, on the banner poles?
I think they're banner poles, banner poles.
Banner poles, right.
And remember, Fox is consistent with, with all of the other intersections too.
Mm-hmm.
So you already have that lighting that's gone in on 407?
Yes.
So, I mean, if you start changing it now, you're going to be inconsistent with what you've already, what's already in place, or going in place, David?
Yeah, I was just going to say what you just said, the, the lighting style is exactly the same as what's already been placed at FM 407, with the few underpays.
The underpass at 407?
Yes.
Yeah, the goal is to have a consistent lighting package.
Yeah.
Throughout the I-35 area, so all of those intersections have that same lighting pole style.
Now, the colors might vary, because you've got the Lakes District at the north end, you know, so.
Yeah, I've seen those.
It'll be the same pole and the same shape, but maybe it'll be a slightly different color at one end of the city than it is at the other end.
So these are the poles underneath the underpass, overpass?
Yeah, this is, this is the pedestrian level lighting.
Okay.
Not, not the high-mast lighting that lights up the interstate.
Was there any artistic creativity involved in this, or just?
Oh, yeah, they're, they're decorative lighting, I mean, they're unlike anything else we've got in Lewisville, they were specifically selected for our corridor, and, and as the city manager indicated, I think we're the only city along the corridor that has the style.
Okay. All right, I'll, I'll be glad to go to 407 and take a look at it, thank you.
It's not there, is it, is it there yet?
It's not in place yet, David, is it? David, are any of the poles actually in place yet? Are any of the poles actually in place yet?
I believe they are at 407.
They are, okay.
They are?
Yeah. And they may even already be partially in, I don't know yet, but I think there may even be some at Garden Ridge, I'm not sure if they've gotten it or.
It's the same style we're talking?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Also, I think you can go to Dropbox, and within you'll find that all those documents are there, so you can look at them on your computer.
Okay, thank you, Brooke. Yeah, I have the same question about item four, basically, yeah, the lighting and the poles and whatever, banner poles, and there was something else on 407.
Banner poles, light poles, textured sidewalk, it's, it's all consistent through the corridor.
Yes, 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 okay.
As David said, the variation deals with the different themes, it's kind of like.
Yeah, I like that, on the side of that, I like that.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Item six.
So I might have Eric spend just a few minutes explaining this item. We've done something similar to this in the past, you are granting a variance here that allows early issuance of building permits, because Coserv took quite a bit of time getting, or trying to get gas and electric in, it's not in yet, and so this allows him to, this is a Mirdad project, to move forward with a, a sale of this property, and so the company that's buying it didn't want to buy it without a promise of the issuance of the building permits, and so that's why we're doing this, it's fairly minimal risk, I think, but Eric, do you want to add anything to what I just said?
I think that pretty much summarized, in your package, council, in your backup, you send a memo, you send an app where this is, this is Windham Crossing Edition, it's going to be out east at 121, 544 to the south, Quiky Lane in that area. We've done this before on three- and four-way escrows for commercial properties to allow off-site and on-site construction to go on simultaneous, and council has approved some of the commercial apps on that. It all comes due at issuance of the certificate of occupancy. This is a little different, this is single-family, and the point that's important here is that all the public infrastructure, your water, sewer, streets, and drainage sidewalks, screen walls are all in and ready to be accepted. We've not accepted the subdivision, so it's still private property, so it's not city property. The difference here, this is, this is Coserv and private utilities, so electric and gas, and in the general development ordinance, it specifically says that no building permits can be issued to the substance, to the subdivision until subdivision acceptance, and in addition, gas and electric have to, have to be provided to the lots. So, bottom line, it's going to take the builders at least four or five months to build a house. There's going to be representatives tonight, and we told you in the memo, that they have a contract with Coserv for phase one and phase two, or part A and part B, those electric and gas utilities will be to those lots within six to eight weeks from today, so it's probably going to be a moot point, there's nothing to escrow here, since it is a private utility, so it's a little different. We're comfortable with it, this allows the developer, the developer to sell and the other builders to move on, the risk here is very minimal. The risk here is very minimal to the city. In your packet, you'll have an agreement, an indemnification agreement that you've seen that those parties have signed. And they agree to not call for a certificate of occupancy to the city of Lewisville if for whatever reason the wind changes direction. So they know what they're doing, and all the parties have agreed. So it's a mutual thing. So we're good, they're good. And there will be someone to answer questions tonight representing them.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Item seven, second reading?
It's your second reading.
I'll be accusing myself of that. On the bridge?
Okay. Item eight?
This is just your final step in the boundary adjustment with Highland Village related to the I-35 expansion.
Okay.
Question, chief, did we get all the alignment on law enforcement with that straight now?
Yeah, this will be much quicker than I expected.
Good to hear.
We're going to close session after that. We have a couple of items.
Yes, sir, we do. We do.
Okay. Any other questions before we break for a minute? Okay?
Are we breaking for a minute, or are we moving straight now?
Five-minute break, and then we'll meet up front.
Of the regular session of the City Council meeting to order. First, we'll have invocation and followed by the pledge to the American Texas flags.
Please join me in a silent, a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledges to our flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. We have a couple of proclamations this evening, and if I could hand up anybody from the municipal court, we're going to proclaim-
Municipal Court Week, so. Now, normally, I don't speak like this, but this is how these are written, so this is how I'm gonna do it. All right? So, whereas municipal courts play a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting quality of life in Texas, and whereas more people come in contact with municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined, and public impressions of the Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal court, and whereas the city of Lewisville hosts the Lewisville Municipal Court, and-
Whereas.
There we go. State law authorizes a municipality to either appoint or elect a municipal judge for a term of office. The Lewisville Municipal Court is a state court, and its judges are members of the state judiciary, and-
Whereas.
All right. The procedures for the Lewisville Municipal Court operations are set forth in the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure and other laws of the state of Texas, and-
Whereas.
You guys are getting it. The city of Lewisville is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that an independent, fair, and competent judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us, and that judges and court personnel should comply with the law and act in a manner that promotes public confidence in the integrity and impartiality of the judiciary, and-
Whereas.
Lewisville municipal judges are not policymakers for the city of Lewisville, but are bound by the law and the canons of judicial conduct and are required to make decisions independent of the governing body of the city council, city officials, and employees, and-
Whereas.
The city council recognizes that the constitution and laws of the state of Texas contain procedural safeguards and criminal cases for all defendants, including indigent defendants, and supports the Lewisville Municipal Court in complying with such legal requirements. Now, therefore, I, and I'm gonna take this from Mr. Durham, Mayor Durham, but TJ Gilmore, Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Lewisville, along with the members of the city council, do hereby proclaim the week of November 7th through 11th, 2016, as Municipal Court Week. In recognition of the fair and impartial justice offered to our citizens by the Municipal Court of Lewisville, proclaim this the 7th day of November. Congratulations. Really appreciate all your work. Absolutely. Thank you. A couple of words for everyone?
I just want to thank the mayor and the council for supporting the municipal court and for the proclamation.
Y'all are wonderful. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
One more. You with me? Here we go. Whereas throughout U.S. history, Americans have kept a special place of honor in their hearts for our veterans, and for more than 70 years, we have set aside each November 11th to recognize the men and women who have so valiantly served America, and whereas, since the first days of our independence, brave Americans have stepped forward to protect our country and promote our ideals. Some 50 million men and women from every corner of our country and from every walk of life have served in our nation's armed forces, and 42 million of them have done so under hostile conditions. And whereas the city of Lewisville has among its workforce many employees who served in the United States Armed Forces, some fighting those very conflicts and the others standing ready during times of peace, put themselves at risk on behalf of all Americans, and whereas some of the city of Lewisville employees are currently military reservists, subject to activation in time of national need, including some who have been called to active duty during the past several years, and whereas our nation and our community owe our veterans a profound debt of gratitude and a deep appreciation for the duties they have discharged. Now, therefore, I, Rudy Durham, and me, TJ Gilmore, Mayor of the city of Lewisville and Mayor Pro Tem, along with the members of the city council, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2016, as Veterans' Day. Now, I have some folks for Veterans' Day to join me here. And any veterans or currently enlisted military, if you guys, please stand. And your name, sir?
Lee Noble, detective, working for the chief.
Ah, outstanding. Mr. Noble, you look sharp in this blue here. I appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and let's give all these gentlemen a round of applause. Thank you for your service.
Hello. Chief looks bored, so I'm gonna say so. No, I just wanted, on behalf of the police department, I want to thank you. Chief has been real supportive of the military, therefore, the city's been real supportive. And I feel real proud to be here in the city of Lewisville after 20 years in the military, and also working with Sergeant Blair back there, who was a chief in the Air Force, and Officer Connor, you know, it's just like being at home, so going from the military to here was perfect for me, and I appreciate the city for allowing me to work for him.
Thank you much. Chief, keep putting those great guys in, because they bring a ton of knowledge and resources. Really appreciate it.
Aye, aye.
That's all I have for the agenda proclamations, and I think Councilman Ferguson will be on the next. I get to step away.
Item D is a public hearing, consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change request from Light Industrial District, parentheses, LI, close parentheses, to specific use, landfill accessory use district, parentheses, SU, landfill accessory use, close parentheses, on approximately 9.86 acres, situated in the S.M. Hayden survey, abstract number 537, located on the southeast quadrant of Huffines Boulevard and Stonewall Drive, as requested by Steve Homeyer, Homeyer Engineering Incorporated, on behalf of the property owner. This is planning and zoning case number 2016-10-28. The comments are, Republic Services provides waste and recycling services to residential, municipal, commercial, and industrial customers nationwide. This request includes the development of a new office and maintenance facility for waste and recycling trucks. The proposal will accommodate a new 22,000-square-foot facility containing 12,000 square feet of office space and 9,954 square feet of vehicle maintenance space. Enhanced landscaping and screening proposed for the site promotes increased compatibility of the proposed facility with existing uses in the general area. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval, four to zero, of the zone change request as of their meeting of October 18th, 2016. At this time, open the public hearing. I have two speaker cards, one from Steve Homeyer in support, and it said you do wish to speak. Is that just available to answer questions? Okay. And then also from Levi Plumlee, who is with Republic Services, and you're here to answer any questions, correct? Okay. If there's no one else wishing to speak, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
Move to approve.
Second.
City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately 9.86 acres situated in the S.M. Hayden survey, abstract number 537, located on the southeast quadrant of Huffines Boulevard and Stonewall Drive, from Light Industrial District zoning to specific use landfill accessory uses district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the public interest and general welfare demand the zoning change and amendment therein made, providing for repealer severability and a penalty, and declaring an emergency.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next up, we have the Visitor Citizen Forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. For the agenda here, I have Ms. Patel and Mr. Roberts.
Hi, my name is Bree Thie Patel. I live at 2668 Yacht Club Drive in Lewisville, Texas, 75056.
My name is Josh Roberts. I live at 61 Johnson in Capel, Texas.
Good evening, mayor, council, and city staff. We're here today to speak to you a little bit about our nonprofit called RSEVA that's based here in Lewisville, Texas. We were incorporated almost six years ago. My sister and I suffered a tragic loss. We lost, we lost our family seven years ago, and my parents were really big about service and this concept of SEVA, which in our faith means selfless service, and it's a way of life. I started the nonprofit to carry on their legacy and their memory of what they had taught us in our home, and that is to serve. Over the course of the last five to six years, our nonprofit has worked in the city of Mesquite, rehabbing homes for five years. After a five-year commitment to the city of Mesquite, we brought the project to Lewisville, and two weekends ago at Make a Difference Day, we served the Tanglewood neighborhood by rehabbing homes. So I'm gonna turn it over to Josh to tell you a little bit more about what we did.
Good evening, mayor, council, city staff. Ms. Patel asked me to provide an overview of the project on our service day. It was the National Make a Difference Day this past month in October. We had about 200 volunteers, our close friends and family, come in to serve that neighborhood, the Tanglewood subdivision, over a half a day period. In that service, what we did essentially is we rehabbed five properties, five homes for homeowners that we met with beforehand to get an understanding of what they might need some help with. Primarily, this was cosmetic improvements, really focusing on the exterior of the homes. So there were five homes that we rehabbed. There were also a couple of community-wide, neighborhood-wide projects, if you will, and that was, we had some volunteer crews that went throughout the entire neighborhood, 48 properties, and they did some curb stenciling of the address numbers on the curb to better serve police and fire during any given response. On that note, I do want to provide a special shout-out to the Lewisville Fire Department. They had a couple of truck crews come in and did some smoke alarm outreach and installs throughout the whole neighborhood during that same day, and they went above and beyond and even helped us with the trash pickup, the debris hauling and debris removal of that vegetative debris and trash from those neighbors' properties. Another special shout-out I'd like to give is to the Lewisville Parks and Leisure Services Department. They went above and beyond and helped us with the trash pickup as well. Truly, we were very humbled and blessed and are always humbled and blessed to be able to serve those, like the special folks there at those houses in the Tanglewood subdivision. And we truly appreciate the city for allowing us to come in with our service project, and we look forward to years to come in the future.
I'd like to say that we are dreamers, that are doers, in the sense of we truly are committed to service, and we're so fortunate, because we are a group of friends, a network of friends, and we really look forward to serving the city of Lewisville and the community and being a fabric of the community as we move forward. So we just want you to know that we are committed to this community, we love Vision 2025, and we want to do everything we can to help you make that become a reality. Thank you.
Mayor, if I might, that was an incredible day. I think we were out there, and she had over 200 volunteers with RSEVA, and the improvements that were made to six homes in one of our neighborhoods was just incredible. I think the coming together of this group of volunteers was really just so impressive and so moving. To me, it's really what 2025 is all about, and that's about thriving neighborhoods, but mostly it's about a community coming together because they love their community. So we hope to build this in the future, more involvement with the city. I told Prit that the last thing we want to do is mess up a good thing, because they have a really, really good program, but to be there and to support and to help this program just grow and grow is really our goal. So I do thank all the departments that stepped up and assisted with the project, but most of all, I thank you, Prit and Josh, for your service.
I have no further comment cards that have been filled out for the Visitor Citizen Forum, so with that, we will move on to item F, the consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. We have no requests for removal of any of the items, so I will entertain a motion.
Consent agenda.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. A motion by Councilman Ferguson, a second by Councilman Daniels, I'm sorry, Councilman Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Have I got them all? All those opposed? Passes. That's the consent agenda. Councilman Ferguson, I think you're up.
Yes. Item G is regular hearing, consideration of a variance to Section 6-57 regarding the issuance of building permits for 64 residential lots prior to gas and electric utilities being available for the Windhaven Crossing addition, Phase A and Phase B. Comments are, due to scheduling problems outside of the property owner's control, gas and electric to the Windhaven Crossing subdivision will be available on or about December 20th, 2016. The property owner, however, desires to transfer ownership of the development on November 8th, 2016, and has requested that the city grant a variance to allow the issuance of the building permit for 64 lots prior to gas and electric service being installed. The recommendation from staff is to approve. I have one speaker card from Paul Bosco, and it says you do not wish to speak, but it does not indicate a position on the item. Are you here to answer questions?
I thought I circled B for answers.
Yeah, do not wish to speak.
Correct.
Okay. But it didn't indicate whether you were in support or opposition.
Support.
Support. Are you here to answer questions?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. So with that, council, are there any questions? All right. I'll take a motion, entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve is presented.
Second.
Excuse me. The recommendation is to approve, provided that all final inspections be withheld for each lot until all utilities are connected.
Okay.
I will amend my motion for that.
All right.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
For item seven, I am going to recuse myself, as my wife works for the city of Farmers Branch.
Item seven is a second reading, consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change request from Agricultural Open Space District, Light Industrial District, and specific use, landfill operation district, to specific use landfill operation and accessory use district on 470 acres located at 580 Huffines Boulevard. Comments on this, this is the second reading of the ordinance, which was approved on October 17th, 2016. And so, city attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately 470 acres situated in the P.O. Leary survey, abstract number 974, A.J. Chounding survey, abstract number 1638, P. Higgins survey, abstract number 525, H. Harper survey, abstract number 605, and the S.M. Hayden survey, abstract number 537, generally located at the southern terminus of Huffines Boulevard and south of the future extension of East Corporate Drive at 580 Huffines Boulevard. From Agricultural Open Space District zoning, Light Industrial District zoning, and specific use landfill operations district zoning, to specific use landfill operations and accessory uses district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the public interest and general welfare demand the zoning change and amendment therein made, providing for repealer severability and a penalty, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Item eight, consideration of an ordinance modifying Lewisville's corporate boundaries in accordance with the boundary adjustment agreement entered into with the city of Highland Village and approving a service plan. On October 3rd, 2016, the city council approved a boundary adjustment agreement with the city of Highland Village in which the parties agreed to establish new boundary lines over the land described in the exhibits attached to the agreement. This is in public hearing requirements have been satisfied. A service plan for the annexed area was made available for public inspection and explained at the public hearings. The proposed ordinance finalizes the boundary adjustment. The recommendation from staff is that council approve. So if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by-
Sorry, you may.
Go ahead.
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council modifying its corporate boundaries in accordance with a certain boundary adjustment agreement entered into with the city of Highland Village, finding that all necessary and required legal conditions have been satisfied, providing that such area as described in Exhibit A of said boundary agreement shall become a part of Lewisville, and that the owners and inhabitants thereof shall be entitled to the rights and privileges of all, of other citizens, and be bound by the acts and ordinances now in effect and to be here and after adopted, providing that such other area described in Exhibit B of said boundary agreement shall be released onto the city of Highland Village for inclusion within its corporate limits, approving a service plan, providing a severability clause, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to reports. Mayor, are you going to take that?
I'll get it.
All right. Thank you.
Nika, do you have anything? Nothing there? Everybody's quiet today. All right, Ross, go ahead.
Evening, mayor. Just wanted a couple of minutes to announce that the police department is participating in a No Shave November campaign, a kind of a unique way to grow awareness about cancer. That includes several uniformed officers. They're required to make some donation to the campaign in return for being able to grow a beard. They will also be displaying a card like this on the lapel, just to also spark conversation with people who might inquire, who still want people to see us being shaggy and just wondering what the heck's going on with PD. It's for a good cause.
And I plan to join them in that, but I do have about a forty-some-year head start.
Have we liked information today?
Mayor, we're still about four tenths below the conservation pool. Of course, it is raining out there, so it'll be different in the morning.
Okay. Eric?
Yes, coming this Saturday at 8:00 in the morning until noon, we have the annual Trinity Trash Bash, and it's gonna be, like I said, out at Lake Park, so if you have not registered, you can register. If you want to, you could just go out there and sign up on the day of. Last year, I believe, if I recollect, that we did about 16 tons of trash just in that morning. So it's a lot of trash that's picked up. It's a good chance to see some of the improvements out at Lake Park, and it will be a lot of fun, and it's supposed to be dry, too. That's it, mayor.
Nothing? From me, sir.
Okay. TJ?
Mayor, just a quick reminder for folks, this next weekend, I think we have the second usage of the Rock the Block trailer, so we're having our communities are getting out there, and they're using some of these new resources. If you're interested in putting together a community block party, I encourage you to go to the city website and just type in "Rock the Block," and you'll find the information on the new resource trailer. It's got games in it, seating, tables, all sorts of cool stuff to really make your neighborhood barbecue a lot more fun. That's all I have, mayor.
Okay. Do you mind?
No, sir.
I just want, as was mentioned earlier, that Friday, there'll be different veterans programs around the area, so if anybody wants to go to one, just find one and move on into it, so.
First of all, just a reminder, tomorrow, your last chance. So if you haven't voted, make sure you do. And for the MCL report, I'll turn that over to Mr. Kunki.
Aren't they supposed to be carrying a microphone all the time?
Seems like it.
Thank you, councilman. Just a couple of quick things from MCL Grand. There's a wonderful art exhibit that opened last week. That is a winner of the Vow competition. It's in the gallery, and it runs for the next two weeks. I encourage people to visit that. In addition, there's a play this weekend, this Friday and Saturday, Peter and the Star Catcher, being put on by Preston Wood Christian Fine Arts, and it's a wonderful show. But I want to call special attention to a show coming up, December 16th, 17th, that's The Three Redneck Tenors. They're returning to Lewisville for their Christmas spectacular, and it generally is close to a sellout every time they do a show, so those tickets are actually on sale now. Anybody who wants to attend probably should buy their tickets before Thanksgiving.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Leroy, everything?
Nothing, mayor. Thank you.
Counselor? To the secretary? You're not ready to work for the election tomorrow and can't wait? You're just gonna stay up here all night, aren't you? Okay. Yeah, we appreciate that. Officer, thanks for your service to the community. Thank you. Now, we're down to item I, closed session. In accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, item one, section 551.072, Real Estate Property Acquisition, and item two, section 551.087, Economic Development, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We will now go into closed session.